About how the transition of the clerk's office will happen. I'm still the town clerk until I swear our clerk-elect in hand, which I will do during the meeting today. At that point, she will have all of the authority vested in the clerk's position, and she will be able to swear in and perform other clerk duties. Okay. I'd like to open this town meeting. Welcome all to Danielle Taylor, a resident of the town of Parsonsfield in the county of York, state of Maine. Greetings. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to warn and notify the inhabitants of the town of Parsonsfield in said county and state qualified to vote by law in town affairs, meet at the town office at 634 North Road in Parsonsfield on Friday, the ninth day of September, 18, 2022, at 3:00 P.M. to act on Articles 1 and 2 in our warrant. The polling hours, 10:00 P.M. to 7:00 P.M. for Article 2. And to notify said inhabitants to meet at the town office at 634 North Road in Parsonsfield on Saturday, the 10th day of September, 18, 2022, at 9:00 A.M., here we are, to act on Articles 3 through 48, 45, pardon me, set out as follows. Article 1 is to accuse a moderator to preside at said meeting. Moderator election took place yesterday. Gloria Hermance was elected moderator. She subsequently appointed Norman Blake as a deputy moderator. Norm will moderate this part of the meeting. At this point, I would look for a motion to hold off reading the full warrant.
Don't move.
You have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of not reading the full warrant at this time? Any opposed? Very good. In that case, I will turn things over to Norm. Thank you all.
For those, I see mostly familiar faces. For those who I've not met, my name is Tom Blake. I'm a migrant moderator from the town of Baldwin, and been here a few years now. Thank you for inviting me back. In the manner, in the matter of Article 2, municipal election results, the results are as follows. For a selectman, David Bauer, 129 votes. Harvey Mayumber, 76 votes. David will be elected selectman. Harvey's term ends when the gavel comes down after Article 45, which is the motion to adjourn. So Harvey is still your selectman. Town clerk, Danielle Taylor, 187 votes. Marion Wright, 2 votes. Danielle is the, is the winner. Road commissioner for a three-year term, Maya Larry, 174 votes. David Budgen got 1 vote. I will, are these all available down there?
Yeah.
Okay. Most of the other votes are relatively small numbers and, and other, other offices that are bound ballot. So I will, with, with your unanimous consent, rather than read these ad nauseam, I'll leave these for folks to check down back. We'll move right along to, oh, we want to salute the bike.
Yes.
Yes. If you'll all join me, those who are able to vote, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, that's one article we generally all agree on, sometimes handy to, handy to feel together. Let's move on to Article 3, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $115,783.39 in order to contract for a full-time, 40-hour winged county sheriff for Parsonsfield. Contract period is July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023. Do we have motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Move and second it. Questions, discussion?
Discussion.
Did you have a question, Jeff?
Yeah, I did. I did have a question. Did the contract, the contract that, was the contract to fill 100%?
That's a selectman question, gentlemen.
Hours wise? Yeah. No, okay. And we give this to you credit, can be, you sell. Yeah. It's asking because some people don't know.
Okay.
And if people want to point out, congratulations for getting the police report on the website.
Yes. Very good. Any further questions, comments on Article 3? Yes, sir?
I'd just like to make a statement. If you look at the end of the warrant, you're looking to raise our taxes beyond the limit set this year. I think it's time for all of us to take a look at, you know, what our friends and neighbors are paying for taxes, what's going to be happening in the future, and weighing the costs and benefits that we get for all of our expenditures. And if you look at the local towns, Cornish, Porter, neither of them have a contracted sheriff. I don't know about you, but I don't hear about all these, you know, terrible crimes and unruliness going on there as compared to what I hear about in Parsonsfield. So I think it's maybe the time that we take a hard look at where this money's going. Before, we have to start looking at making cuts in other places. So for your consideration, I'd just like to put that out there.
Well, stated. Jeff, just for a small point of information, you wouldn't have had to attend many Porter meetings to see what was going on over there. And there was a big push for a deputy to hit, a lot going on over there. And I still believe that in the preliminary stages of trying to, Cornish, on the other hand, you're right, I don't hear much going on in Cornish. But I guess that's, that's what I, but Porter certainly had their fair share of stuff going on to the point that they were looking into it for sure.
The other point is that we just put the police report on the webpage, and if you look it up, you will find that there are problems here in Parsonsfield. I suppose what I'm thinking.
I'm sure. I'm not suggesting that there aren't problems. I'm just suggesting for over $100,000, do we have that significantly fewer problems than the surrounding towns who aren't spending that money? It's, you know, it's not like if we don't spend this money, we're not going to have any protection from the sheriff's department. And so, again, I just think that it's time to consider, you know, our financial outplays.
Further questions, comments? Jeff?
I, I get the gentleman's point. Cornish doesn't have police officers or board every day. Maybe we should have, have one for Porter and Cornish and Parsonsfield and all share the same cost. Now, whether we have a shared sheriff, maybe they can do, let's say 80 hours, but two to three times.
Something to bring up with the selectmen at a meeting, and perhaps they could talk to the neighboring towns about that. Yes?
Norm, could you repeat the questions because we can't hear them?
Okay.
Give us a summary.
Yeah. Basically, Jeff said he'd like to, he'd like to have considered the idea that maybe the town of Parsonsfield could go in with a couple of neighboring towns and essentially contract maybe an 80-hour deal to be spread among three towns rather than 40 hours here in Parsonsfield. That was his, his thought.
Would you agree with me?
Yes, sir?
I'm not going to stand up and bother me, huh? But anyway, I want to say that there is something going on. I live over in a pretty rural part of the town, and at least two or three times a week, I see blue lights, a tire ring, a boat, day or night going by my house. So there's something happening over there. I don't know what. But for some reason, it's, and then all the sheriff's vehicles, I haven't seen a state police vehicle for several years, not inbound.
Mm-hmm.
So if something happening, if they're doing that all the time.
Further questions, comments? Jeff, briefly?
Now that we have a police report, maybe, maybe people can look it up and see.
See. Are we ready to vote? Article 3, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $115,783.39 in order to contract for a full-time Yuck County Sheriff for Parsonsfield. All those in favor? Those opposed? The article carries is approved. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to place all Yuck County Sheriff contract unexpended funds in the Yuck County Sheriff's Reserve account yearly. Hear a motion?
Don't move.
Okay. Just to move things right along, when I get done reading an article, if somebody wants to say so moved or something to that effect, we can, we can goose things along a little, a little faster. It's not quite as ceremonious, but we can do it. Okay. Article 4, questions, comments?
Discussion.
Jeff?
Is there something, I don't remember last year.
No, we've done it in the past. What this does is it takes money that you didn't spend with the deputy, like last year we didn't spend all the money because they couldn't provide the service. It puts it into reserve account, reserved for the deputy. Otherwise, it'd go back into the general fund, and you'd have to be appropriating more money for the sheriff's department. We just have like a little reserve.
Yeah.
Your other question, Jeff, last year I talked to Cornish about sharing the cost to the deputy.
Right.
And after they stopped laughing, they said no.
Right. So. Someone's going to hand up way over. Yes?
What, what is the balance of the reserve fund for the deputy right now? What does it say it has right now?
If you look in your little book, that's about $55,000.
Page 20.
It's on page 20. Okay. Most of that coming from money that was not spent last year due to them being understaffed civilian.
They have plenty in that account. How come we're raising the full amount, $115,000, that being applied for this year?
Well, because the 115 is their standard contract. It includes, we say 40 hours, we want 40 hours. But that turns into about 32 hours when you take vacations, training, just time that the officer's away from the job, which is part of the normal thing. So we voted a few years ago that we wanted the full 40 hours. So rather than make this money move, we already appropriated the money, it's in the reserve. When the overtime hours come in, if they do, we'll pay it out of the reserve, and you won't have to increase the tax rate at all.
Thank you. Further questions, comments on Article 4, unexpended funds? Jeff?
I think they should just put it back into that, into that account, and start building it, building it up. You know, like the roads, we put it back in the roads. If we guys have filled up all the money, then it should just go back into that, and that's it. It's just here, we can find out if we're actually going over or not. It's just my opinion. I didn't even know that when I was on the vice committee, and I didn't even know that in this. Okay, I'll make it short.
Ready to vote? All those in favor of Article 4, to place all Yuck County Sheriff contract unexpended funds in the Yuck County Sheriff's Reserve account yearly? All those in favor? Those opposed? The article passes. Article 5, see if the town will vote to combine its various non-dedicated sources of income into a general revenue account from which it will pay its expenses as authorized by this town meeting.
Don't move.
Move and second, questions, comments? Yes? I, I, are you Cliff?
I'm Cliff.
The dark glasses got me messed up.
What, are they listed these non-dedicated sources of income, or are they listed in the package? I'm sorry.
I put asked if the non-dedicated sources of revenue, so-called, are listed somewhere in the town report.
I don't know. I know what they are.
What are they?
Like, for instance, three weeks ago, we got, I believe, $5,000 from our insurance company for the tree damage of the storm a few months ago. That would be a non, that would be something we wouldn't expect that goes into the general of town. We get 15,000, 30,000 a year from the solar farm. They lease the land, even though they're not doing anything with it, they're going to C and D, we still get the leased, the leased money. That goes into the general fund. So items that we don't expect, they would go into the general fund.
Is that answering question?
Sort of partly, I guess. I guess what would be good for the town, I personally feel, is that we have a listing of all that money in the, in the warrant we have. And I know that we have a general fund, but it would be nice to see those undedicated funds listed, broken down, so we have an idea of how much income is coming in, and we can track it as it goes into the general fund.
Dan?
Isn't it true though that this kind of stuff that we came from anticipates going to be coming in?
Yeah. Those are the pennies from heaven, right?
We, we don't have a football. Fire.
Further questions, comments on this? Those in favor of Article 5 is read. Those opposed? The article passes. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to use up to 50% of the unappropriated surplus balance to reduce the 2022 tax commitment.
Don't move.
Move and second, questions, comments? Here are none. All those in favor of Article 6 is read. Them opposed? It is to be unanimously passed. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to borrow from the dedicated town funds in anticipation of taxes, set amount not to exceed 75% of the town funds, and be repaid with appropriate interest.
Don't move.
Okay.
Move and second, questions, comments? Here are none. All those in favor of Article 7 is read. Those opposed? Article 7 passes. Article 8, see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal offices to spend an amount not to exceed 3/12 of the budgeted amount of the 2022 annual budget during the period from July 1, 2022, to annual meeting 2023.
Don't move.
Is that, is that written right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, we did this year, last year.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Then move the second, questions, comments? Jeff?
How do they get the figure of not to exceed 3/12?
3/12 is because your fiscal year ends on 30 June, and now we've got July August sent up. That keeps these guys out of jail.
Excuse me, Norm?
Jeff?
Yeah, that article is not written correctly.
Yeah.
It should be July 1, 2023.
Yes.
To cover the period, the end of our fiscal year next year through our town meeting next year. We're already in the period of 2021, uh, 2, town meeting. That was approved last year.
You've got something to say. I would love that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Make sure I know this, because I can't see your hand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Article 8. I would offer an amendment to that article to correct the date, July 1, 2022, to read July 1, 2023, which was the intent of the article.
Do we hear a second to the amendment?
Second.
It moved a second to it. All, and again, we're, the reason we're doing this is we're talking about allowing the selectmen to spend money next summer, not this summer, to, to cover expenses until we can get around to having a town meeting again. So all those in favor of David's amendment to change the date in Article 8 from July 1, 2022, up to 2023? All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, the amendment passes. Is there further questions, comments on the article? Cliff?
Just a quick question. It looks like an open-ended court launch in terms of spending. It says to see if the town will vote to authorize our select people to spend an amount, not to exceed, of the budgeted amount, annual budget during the period, but to spend it on what? On, on anything in particular?
School bills we pay.
The town budget?
Just the general budget.
School bills, we pay $160,000 a month.
Okay.
For the school. Got to pay that in July, August, and September?
Yeah.
Again, this is a housekeeping bill to keep things legal until we can have town meetings. Because try to get here, try to get people here, June 30, 11:59 P.M. could be difficult. Okay. Further questions, comments on Article 8? All those in favor of Article 8 as amended? Those opposed? Article 8 passes. Thank you, David. Article 9, see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to close all unexpended appropriations and overdrafts into the unappropriated surplus account.
Don't move.
Move and seconded, questions, comments? Here are none. All those in favor of Article 9 is read. Those opposed? Article passes. Article 10, see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to close reserve accounts, that is projects completed or canceled, to the unappropriated fund balance account on an annual basis as directed by the select board.
Don't move.
Move and seconded, questions, comments? Here are none. All those in favor of Article 10 is read. Those opposed? Article passes. Article 11, see if the town will vote to expend the following dedicated funds in accordance with state and federal law. These include plumbing and building permit fees, animal control monies, LRAP money, FEMA grant monies, MEMA reimbursements, main emergency management authority, American Rescue Plan, and I guess I'll leave the recommendations to you. I hear a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Yeah, a second. Questions, comments on Article 11? Jeff?
Maybe it's like we can explain it, because the vice committee had no, no, no vote on that. What does it all mean?
Okay. Jeff asks the selectmen, what's this all mean?
It just gives us authority to spend the money or for the, whatever. If it's a plumbing fee, we have to send to the state. Animal control, we pay the, you know, control officer mileage and so much money. With Cornish, by the way, that's a shared thing. Road assistance program, the state gives us about $82,000 a year to help with our roads, but we have to fill out information, you know, which roads we fix, that type of thing. But that's, that's the state money. FEMA grants and NEMA grants are far and few between. The American Rescue Plan, you're all familiar with that, I'm sure. We have about $200,000 in the bank. We had an approval to spend about $100,000 of that at a special town meeting a few months ago. Some of that will get spent, others, other will not get spent, but there'll be another special town meeting to keep spending the money as we can. If any of you have listened to our spectacular workout, you'll know that we're going to be putting some siding on the building here, so we won't have to paint it every few years or so it doesn't look terrible. We're having a generator installed in this, for this building, so that in case of power outages, the building will be completely self-sufficient, where, let's see what else the other thing we're doing. We're doing the video, so we can video, audio and video. The selectmen's meetings continue with the planning board meetings and the meetings in this room, so they'll be available for anyone to watch at home. We have other projects that haven't been voted on, but those are the ones that were voted on last, about two months ago, and are in process and will be done. I'd say some of them will be done within a month or so. If you might have noticed out back, we have a very nice gas tank, propane, 1,500 gallons?
1,000 gallons.
1,000 gallons.
And there are also a couple of other projects, redoing the hot water system in here, replacing the hot water, instant hot water tank over in the, I guess you might call it the storage room. And it's upgrading all the filters and faucets and things like this. We're getting the bathrooms up in good shape, so that this room, this particular building can be more user-friendly and hopefully ready for emergency uses if, if needed. So that's a plus. And that all came from this artwork line, by the way.
Yes?
Speaking about meetings in this room, whoever decided this change of venue, thank you. It makes so much more sense. It's easier to hear, and we can be spread out, and it's very nice, so thank you.
As long as you understand that I'm not good at changes. So if I mess up or something, it's because I need to be retrained in the new spatial organization. Cliff?
I know the town has wrapped up quite a bit of legal expenses in regards to the Stanley Building, et cetera. Would that be listed under Article 11?
No, it would be listed under expenses for legal expenses.
Okay, so you have an article that you, the legal thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's in the, it's in the body of the report somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Our legal expenses.
Okay. Further questions on Article 11?
One more time.
Jeff?
The American Rescue Plan, good plan. I'll make it really short. I spent some time in the hospital last week, and, and, and the service wasn't really great. They said they lost 22 nurses. And I'm like, wait, American Rescue, we're taking all this money and putting it into maybe catering or cameras or whatever, and some of that money should be used to help us in our healthcare system. And I think we should start a program with some of that money in the high schools to get kids to get interested into, into nursing and, and to the rescue service, because we really don't know how bad the system is until you need it. And when you spend three and a half hours in a emergency room waiting to be served when somebody has like a heart attack or, you know, a similar tube, it gets pretty scary. And I think some of that money should not go into material things, but into education for, for the kids in this school system.
I think your point is well taken, although it's probably a bit off the article, and probably best directed to our federal, you know, our senators and our representatives that go to Washington, because they're, they're the ones.
I think the, the selectmen had discretion on the American Rescue Plan, on how that one is done.
And you really can't, we do have a little.
Yeah.
As I understand it, we can't spend it for people, because, no, no, because you think about it, you spend $50,000 to hire somebody, yeah, two years from now, there's no money from American Rescue, and now, now you have a $50,000 bill every year.
Yeah.
That someone's going to pay.
I, I, I won't argue that. I just thought that Americans need help here, and some of that money could go into the healthcare system.
Again, those, those folks up there that go to Washington have a whole lot more control over that. And by the way, tell Marion that Norman says how he.
Thank you. I know. We miss it.
Okay. Further questions, comments on Article 11? Here are none. All those in favor of Article 11 is read. Those opposed? Article passes. Article 12, see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate the sum of $181,135.24 for the compensation for the town officers and/or employees for the ensuing year. The amounts are listed. and or employees for the ensuing year." The amounts are listed as informational below the body of the article. Do you hear a motion?
I'm with you.
Second?
Second.
Move consecutive. Questions, comments on Article Twelve? Yes.
I did not.
More noise, David.
Just a general comment. You'll see under the appeals board and the planning board that they say up to a certain amount. We actually have some members of both the appeals and the planning boards who just want to volunteer their time with no pay. By putting that up to in there, we can not, we are not required to pay them if they so choose. By default, we pay them what's shown here. But this, otherwise, it was a case that we had to pay them, and some people just didn't want to get paid.
Makes sense. Further question, comments on Article Twelve? Here are none. All those in favor of Article Twelve as presented? Those opposed? The article passes. By the way, just point of information. Before I got educated on the subject and being a moderator, it's a continuing education. I used to read ad nauseam down through these columns of figures and bore everybody and wear myself out. It's been pointed out to me that the article is basically just that first sentence, and all the other listings are informational, and we don't have to torture you that way. So, we'll proceed in that manner. Article Thirteen, "See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three-thousand-eighty dollars and ninety-three cents stipend, plus seventy-five percent of plumbing permit fees and all other code enforcement officer fees for the compensation of the code enforcement officer."
I'm with you.
Move consecutive. Any discussion?
Discussion?
Jeff?
I noticed that we don't really have a C.E.O. report, per se, so I can sometimes I have a C.E.O. report every month that is in it, and everything's lit.
The, I believe this code enforcement officer works at the pleasure of the selectmen, and if we introduce a selectman, we should do that. That might be a handy thing.
Just a known fact, like in two thousand and sixteen, we had a detailed report of a day, address, match, lot number, and the work that was being done. And I can't do a town report. And for this year, there was absolutely nothing. And I was just wondering if we could go back to...
Yeah, I agree with that. I thought it was in here of every new house and whatnot.
Further questions, comments?
Who's the current?
Who's the current C.E.O.?
Jesse Winters.
I heard that he was not able to perform the job because he was sick or something?
He is going through some sort of treatments, but he has been here. He was here vacuuming floors last night as everyone was coming in and out. But he has been here every Thursday unless he was at a meeting with a homeowner.
Yes.
We had a...
Speak right up, please.
We were at a meeting, and we had the town lawyer there at one of the meetings, and the issue of how the C.E.O. was paid was brought up by him, saying it was more like a conflict of interest for his pay to be part of the fees. So, I just think like the selectmen should probably look at a different way of paying the C.E.O.
We are doing that.
You are doing that?
Right. The town attorney was concerned that since the C.E.O. approves all the building permits, that, a permit approval indicates more money for him, as opposed to denying it, which he would get nothing. So, it's an incentive to approve permits. And we said, well, we don't think that's happening, but it's certainly a good idea. And we're looking right now at different ways of compensating the C.E.O.
Okay, thank you.
You still use David Lurk?
Yes, we do, yes.
You've got a friend of mine for twenty years, a sharp detail-oriented guy, Jesse.
And he has some good digs in this. And he puts some good digs in this.
Oh, yeah.
Along with that, Jim, I was thinking about recently, other towns, the other towns are currently kind of looking at some of the same things, and I was speaking with them. And the last couple of years, we've had like a building boom, so permit fees have been way up. And our town, he gets a very small stipend compared to our neighboring town gets like four times as much as a stipend. And I think a stipend would serve us a little better because, and the code enforcement officer, because when things drop down, he's still gonna get some money, you know what I'm saying? And because he's out, he's doing stuff that nobody else wants to do, trust me. He's visiting people that nobody else wants to visit, and he doesn't get paid for that. And he's actually doing it. He's out there, you know, seeing the people that don't want to see anybody. So, I think it would serve him better and us better if we had a different, more of a stipend and less permit fees type deal. And that way, he got a more steady income out of it versus a year when there's no building going on, he gets hardly any income. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just wanted to mention to everyone that Jesse is always down around Long Pond. We've been having some issues with people cutting down trees, removing vegetation in the shoreline zoning area. And when I contact Jesse, he's right there to follow up on my concern.
Is that a job of a C.E.O. to police the land? That seems quite odd.
I believe the D.E.P. relies on local C.E.O.s to shoot up a flare and raise the alarm, and then if he can't sort it out, they come in. But yeah, that's his job.
Norm?
Yes, excuse me. Our C.E.O. is also our certified shoreline zoning inspector, and that's what gives him that authority.
Actually, if you see something going on, anybody in the D.E.P. and raise the alarm. Okay, further questions, comments on Article Twelve? Yes?
So, follow up on what Jesse said there. By this time next year, the pay, the way the C.E.O. is compensated will have been changed.
Well, I think that's proactively thinking. I'm not saying a hundred percent, but we're definitely, I agree, there's a better way for him and for us. You know, we're definitely gonna look into it. You know, the same thing, I had a phone call about this this week, actually, with around ten.
It would appear that through this year until June thirty, unless the provisions put forth in this article and change in a special town meeting, that the current status quo would have fallen. But you might see the article next time change that. Further questions, comments? Yes, sir?
So, if we vote against this article, then he doesn't get paid until the selectmen do something. Does that sort of force their hand to do that, or is that gonna leave him high and dry for a year?
Well, this article, if you look at the, all the people that get paid, this article encompasses a whole lot of people.
This is...
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
This is a three thousand dollar stipend.
Yeah.
That's minimal. That's, I was, that's one quarter of what our, you know, I'm just saying, our neighboring town. So, that doesn't really, that isn't, so that's actually only about ten. So, that's about fifteen percent of his total pay, that three thousand dollars, if you add in the permit fees.
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, I guess, yeah, you could not pass that, but the, if anything, the stipend will go up, and the percentage of the permit fees will go down if we change something, yes.
Right. But I'm just suggesting that if we don't vote for it, it spurs the action to take care of that legal issue the gentleman over here talked about, and some of the other concerns. That's all.
It might mean that the code enforcement officers don't get paid next week?
You'd be very unfair of the code enforcement officer.
Okay. I was just curious.
I mean, no money coming in, and even if we pass something within a month or two, which would be a pretty speedy paddling. You're talking a half a year, you get no pay, no nothing.
No, no, it wouldn't be no pay yet. It would only be...
Well, he's talking about...
The stipend is only three thousand.
Oh, I thought he was talking about fees also. I think he was talking about everything.
Oh, yes, yes, I stand corrected. Sorry.
So, we're working on it.
Yes.
Can it be passed with a recommendation from this group that it is changed by next year at this time?
I, I'm not sure if a recommendation would have any legal standing. I think these fellows over here, and probably this fellow down here, have heard your concerns and...
Because I understand what this gentleman is saying, that if we don't vote it in, that we don't want to be unfair, but at the same time, it would be nice to see his stipend go up.
Yeah. Jeff?
Just a little suggestion for everyone. If you have any concerns or anything, just get on the agenda, we need the selectmen to talk to them about it.
Yeah. Okay. Again, I apologize for jumping back to Article Twelve. I told you, if you change the orientation, I will, instead of paying some retraining. Anyway, let's get to Article Thirteen. All those in favor of Article Thirteen as read? Those opposed? Article Thirteen passes. Article Fourteen, "See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine-thousand-seven-hundred-eighty dollars and ninety-five cents for a deputy code enforcement officer. That amounts like twenty-three fifty-one per hour for eight hours a week."
I'm with you.
Okay. Move consecutive. Questions, comments? Jeff?
I'm actually going back to two thousand and sixteen, but the code enforcement officer was also the town clerk, and was able to do it without having an assistant. So, I don't understand the assistant situation.
Jeff?
To my understanding and how I would view this personally is, this isn't, it does say assistant, but it's, or you could say assistant, but it's more or less, if we get in a bind, we don't have to rely on another town. Like, if something, our code enforcement officer gets sick, seems like there was, he was talking about maybe taking a full-time position in another town. This would get us through until we had another code enforcement, full-time code enforcement officer. I, this isn't eight hours a week on top of our selectmen, on top of our C.E.O. This is eight hours a week, we can use him if we don't, in lieu of not having a C.E.O.
Okay.
And he's also working on his certification for the same time.
The new guy.
What?
It just seems like there's a pile of issues surrounding our C.E.O. And the fact that we even have to ask for an assistant to be present brings to question some of the very serious concerns that we will have. And then I would have to say that what Mr. Barrett said earlier is that we should hop on getting that sandwich deal straightened out. So, everything is about more than, and again, there seems to be one problem at another arising to us about this present C.E.O.
Further questions, comments on Article Fourteen? Yes?
Maybe changing the designation of the assistant as substitute would make more sense. The C.E.O. is not available.
It doesn't actually say assistant, does it? It says deputy. The town will vote to raise and appropriate for the deputy C.E.O. So, if, Lynn, I have no intentions of, this isn't, my understanding and the way I view this and would handle this, this isn't ninety-seven-hundred-eighty dollars, ninety-five cents on top of our C.E.O. This is how much money we would pay him. That's how much less our C.E.O. would get. So, essentially, you know what I'm saying? Because our, we would not use this guy unless our C.E.O.'s absent. So, if we're not paying our C.E.O., we're gonna pay this guy. You know what I'm saying? This isn't anything to do with an extra ninety-seven-hundred-eighty dollars a year. This is to do with, gives us a way to hire somebody instead of going into an agreement with another town C.E.O. in case of an emergency, a health issue arises, anything like that. We have to have somebody, what are we gonna do for in the middle of this huge subdivision thing? We need a C.E.O. and our C.E.O. gets sick and can't come. What, then what do we do? We have to emergency find somebody, or we have someone on hand that we can say, can you please step in for eight hours a week for now?
But it seems like the way you're explaining it, the whole argument should be rewritten, because it sounds to me like you would be pulling the standard C.E.O.'s salary for that particular project that he was sick, that he couldn't do. He would, that would reduce that C.E.O., our standard C.E.O., by whatever the amount the deputy had to be receiving for that. It sounds like we're raising an additional almost ten thousand dollars. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I agree. I get that. It could be worded differently, but that is not how I intend to use this whatsoever. This is...
No, I understand that, but I know that's not how you intend to do this, or intend to do that. But ultimately, it comes down to us giving the town almost ten thousand dollars more for a de, for a deputy that would be above and beyond whatever the C.E.O., current C.E.O. is getting, whether he's sick or he's not sick. You know what I'm saying?
I get what you're saying, Cliff, but in this case, I don't know how anyone else would view this, but if our deputy, we're paying this guy by the hour. If he signs off on a bunch of house permits, the town will then receive all the money for those permits. Our C.E.O. will no longer get those. You get what I'm saying? Our C.E.O. won't get them if he doesn't sign off on them. If this guy does, we only pay him by the hour. So, essentially, it would be a better deal for the town, more like what Jim's talking about in the future. We pay somebody by the hour, or we give them a stipend. So, it's, I mean, if the house permit is fifteen hundred dollars, and we have to pay this guy for two hours, we owe him fifty bucks, and the town received fourteen hundred and fifty dollars versus the code enforcement officer getting it. Correct?
I guess, why wouldn't, if your C.E.O. couldn't perform the work, why wouldn't this def, why wouldn't this additional person, this person you bring in to cover him, get the seventy-five percent of the permits and get paid that way? He would get the money that the current C.E.O. would get.
It's not provided in the article.
Well, then he would be the active C.E.O. if you brought him in.
This is true, and that's all stuck. People are running along with working out all this other stuff. We can try to get all this figured out.
Right. You mean, right now, we'd just be paid twenty-three fifty-one an hour with no fees for permits or anything like that, just a straight hourly range, similar to what we were talking about before.
Jeff?
It's just really kind of funny. Everybody wants to be along. Deputy C.E.O. twenty-three fifty-one per hour for eight hours a week. I don't know if they meant, for eight hours a week.
A week, I think.
All right. So, one letter's missing. That's fine. But is that maximum eight hours? Minimum eight hours?
Jesse?
I can't, I would say that was intended for a maximum of eight hours a week, yeah.
Dan?
It sounds like this is a whole lot more like what we're asking you to do with the regular C.E.O.'s.
Correct.
Further questions, comments on the deputy C.E.O. article, Article Fourteen?
We have to increase the hours. Jesse is getting one of, he can't be at three places at once. People come in here, they don't show up. He has to go out on the road at a certain time. We have to do something about the hours. I mean, this is just a stepping stone as to what we're gonna do, or what should be done next year. And we had it on the table to do so. So, we've gotta increase the hours somewhere along the line.
Yes?
I just want to say that for all the people that are pointing the finger thinking Jesse isn't doing a good job as a C.E.O., I certainly appreciate everything that he's been doing, his consistency, his return to phone calls. As a business owner, I feel that he's done fantastic for our town, and I would beg to see anybody else want to do his job for what he's received for him.
Are we ready to vote on Article Fourteen? I believe so. All those in favor of Article Fourteen as read? Those opposed? The article passes. Just as a point of information, over in Baldwin, our code enforcement officer, how many years was he in, Daniel? Fifteen, twenty years? Our code enforcement officer gave us about one year's notice, showed a great deal of courtesy. It's taken us about one year to find a new C.E.O., and he's... It's taken us about one year to find a new CEO and he's just getting broken into the job there. How did it come like?
What do you pay him? Do you remember?
Twenty, twenty-two bucks an hour? See the twenty, twenty-two bucks an hour?
That might be a problem.
Yeah, well, there you go. We're, we're awful titles, you know? Article 15, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate following sums to cover general governmental expenses. The listing is there for your curfew. The total amount of Article 15 is two hundred twenty-three dollars, I'm sorry, two hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and no cents, all, no pennies, I should say. Um, all those in favor? Let's turn, let's turn this room back around. Um, do we hear a motion?
I'm moving.
Moving second. Questions, comments, discussion? Yes?
I just wanted everyone to know way down the border, South River, the corridor commission, that Jim Barron and myself represent the town of Parsonsfield on that commission. And they have been testing for E. coli at the swimming beach on Long Pond, free of charge for many years. And I just want to recommend that people approve this article with the four hundred dollars for the commission.
Further questions, comments on Article 15? Hear or not, all those in favor of Article 15 as read? Those opposed? Article passes. Article 16, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate five thousand dollars to be placed in the sidewalk capital reserve fund.
I'm moving.
Thank you. Moving second. Questions, comments? Yes?
I'll vote for this article if the sidewalks from the Stanley Building to Lovejoy's Building is redone.
That's where, that's where it's from.
What's that?
Maybe that was.
I had those words, but I'll vote yes.
That's what we're working towards, you see, but it's, we have to, per the state, we have to come up with X amount of dollars for how much they will put in. It's a paper trail by a long.
We have to do an engineering study for us. We have to, then the state will come in and help us.
Just help clean up the downtown area. That section right there is really lovely with Colleen's, with new store and with the bakery.
Then the restaurant.
Thank you.
Restaurant.
Further questions, comments on the sidewalk account? Yes?
Is this just a continuation of money that is going into this fund?
Yes.
Because I've heard the sidewalks are coming for so many years.
Well, that, that.
Is it just trying to build up to that point that we actually have enough to do it?
We have, it's hard, you said, we have to have enough money to do a study first. And I'm not even sure this, I'm pretty sure this won't cover that study, but yes, it'll build up to that study.
I mean, we have fifty-two hundred dollars already in the reserve. This will make it ten thousand.
Okay.
And then we'll go from there next year. We'll either ask for more, see what's going on with the state.
Thank you.
Yes?
Yeah, have we got a plan to fix the Stanley Building? Before you do the.
I, I will, I will allow a brief answer, but that's outside the scope of this article. But nonetheless, it's worthy of Jesse's bringing it to.
Well, not, but you wouldn't fix the sidewalk before you fix a building.
The Stanley Building is private property. We cannot do anything with Stanley Building. Somebody owns the Stanley Building, like you own your house. You don't want us to come and do anything at your house, while they don't want us to go do anything at their house. We don't own the Stanley Building. Somebody, a tax payer owns the Stanley Building.
He doesn't pay taxes.
He pays them every year. We pay more money on him than we do all of you folks because he pays extra interest on all of his property because he's three years late. But he does pay them every year.
Okay, let's get back to sidewalks. Any further discussion on sidewalks? All those in favor of Article 16, to raise appropriate five thousand dollars to be placed in the sidewalk capital reserve fund? All those in favor? Those opposed? The article passes. Article 17, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate following sums to cover protection expenses. Total protection expenses are a hundred sixty-eight thousand seventy-four dollars and sixty-three cents. Do we have a motion?
I'm moving.
Okay. Moving second. Questions, comments? Jeff?
I did notice that the streetlights, they go down. That's good.
Because it's a big thanks to Mr. Roy.
Thanks to your committee, we eliminated something.
Are you guys, have you guys been switching to LEDs?
No, no.
We've switched to LEDs over in Baldwin and it pulls the kilowatt hour rate down.
Well, you guys get brighter, we get darker. We just shut ours off.
Nobody ever accused us of being brighter than anybody else. What?
Just a point of interest for, for the town. Jeff's been working with the select CEO for how many years to try to change over the policy?
Jeff gives us the accurate answer of a long time. Well, we're finally getting it. Further questions, comments on Article 17? Did we eliminate any more streetlights?
Yes.
Did we eliminate any more streetlights? Jeff, did we eliminate any more streetlights?
I did, I think the question was, did we eliminate?
Eliminate or eliminate? Eliminate. Eliminate.
We eliminated twenty-something.
Yeah, the question was, did we eliminate more? The answers.
Yes.
Jesse?
We eliminated everything that we thought was not in an intersection or in a town area, anything off the beaten path. And we absolutely had no complaints. Nobody was complaining because it was dark. So, to answer your question, we probably can, Jeff and I can probably go through that list and get rid of a few more, you know? I'm fine with it. We have to talk to our comments.
What I do is whenever I see, all the cream down we've been having, from main truck over there, and I go fix the line room. We said, we fixed it while we're here. You just kept putting new ball in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I found out they were fixing it there in the area.
Yeah, the idea of this removal was with, in conjunction with CMP, when they wanted to turn over all the lights to LEDs and they were going to come through and do them. So, when we had them removed, they removed them at that time. I don't know what it would cost to have them come in and remove more of them. I don't know.
I really don't get it, it doesn't run, but I do mention it to them, I do, that it's out when I see them or them.
They're good boys. Jeff?
Well, the answer to that probably is, if, if the contract is out, then they're not going to service it. And, and a lot of our contracts aren't out. Every poll has a contract. Some of those contracts have ran out years and years ago. And that's probably why they don't replace them.
Are we ready to vote on Article 17? Evidently, let's, uh, see, all those in favor of Article 17 as presented? Those opposed? Article 17 passes. Article 18, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of eighty-one thousand dollars for Soccapi Rescue expenses.
I'm moving.
Thank you. Moving second. Questions, comments? Hear or not, all those in favor? What, was there a?
I was just going to ask if anyone from the rescue.
What?
Soccapi Rescue expenses. I was just wondering if anybody's here to represent them, to, to speak of.
Thank you.
Yes. Would you, you got a couple people from the rescue. Are you residents of the town of Parsonsfield?
I am not.
He is.
Okay. I asked, I asked for unanimous, ordinarily, we have to take a vote. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent of the group to allow non-residents, these particular non-residents, to speak regarding the rescue. Is that? Yep. Any opposition? Hear or none? Please speak.
Okay. Uh, my name is Mike Hatch. I'm the chief of Soccapi Rescue. This is a sizable rise in the price over the last years. The last years, we've been in the thirty thousand roughly range for repeated years. And I can't tell you how much the prices have gone up. Both in the number of runs, we went from seven hundred runs a year to a thousand runs last year, which greatly impacts us, and wages is a huge part of it because we were paying our drivers twelve fifty an hour a year ago. Our EMTs fourteen dollars an hour. And for those of you that own businesses here, what are you paying people for minimum wage? In another town, one of the selectmen said, I won't get, I won't stop my car in the morning for under twenty dollars. So, we have spent this year tight trading or a little bit at a time raising the price of the salaries and I don't have as many people leaving. Yeah, but mutual aid is a great part of it. We have added four shifts a week as part of this eighty-one thousand dollars. Those shifts are on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, which are the busiest days. And we, we serve new folks in the geographically largest town in the state. And it's one of the most beautiful towns in the state. I'm not sucking up here. But if it works, then that's good. We had to farm out a hundred and forty-something calls to other towns because our turnaround time, if you haven't noticed, we're nowhere near a hospital. We choose from seven hospitals and they're all almost an hour away. So, a call takes three hours. And if we have to go over to Baldwin's lake, you can add another forty-five minutes to that. So, the chances that we're going to get a second call while we're gone for that three hours is very great. Adding those four shifts has cut down, last year this time, we were about ninety mutual aid calls. Right now, we're at about fifty. And those calls are coming in in the middle of the night or after that extra base shift happens. It's our hopes that in upcoming years, we'll be able to raise revenues, to be able to cover all shifts with two crews because we're a huge area and the turnaround time just makes it necessary for us. We cover four towns. I had something else I was going to add to that, but I'll, I'll save it. I think that about covers it for me.
Bruce?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Nice, Bruce, I'm president of Parsonsfield, I'm the, I'm president of the board of directors. So, this, so this community went through, went through an exercise where they went outside of our, of our provision to see what the cost would be. Uh, we are a 501(c)(nonprofit) and they're, and they had two bids, one from Action, and that would have cost each town about, probably about a hundred and seventy-five thousand each. So, eighty-one thousand, uh, and still we're, we're scraping by and we're, we're running grants, we need a truck. So, uh, eighty-one thousand and for the service that is rented is, is pretty good.
Now, I had to explain to the federal government when I put in the U.S. Census paperwork for our finances this year, it's a requirement every year for us, that we operate at a deficit every year. And it's not a small deficit, it's a pretty good-sized deficit. As we were funded before, our deficit this year would be in excess of two hundred thousand dollars. So, that's, it's just the fact that we continue to operate that absorbs that and gives momentum to the group. But it's, it's a tough nut to crack.
Yes?
I just also would like to add, obviously, I'm resident of Parsonsfield, and I'm also on the board for the Soccapi Rescue. And I just want to mention, anybody that's familiar with the medical field at all, to have what we have in this area. There is a term called the golden hour. And literally, for somebody, life or death, they have one hour. And for our rescue to be as quick as they are and get to our people as fast as they do, we, we live it up here. I'm very, very blessed to have that kind of coverage for such a remote area.
Howdy. Well, I want to say one thing, in my enthusiasm coming into office three years ago, I thought, and said, why can't we get these four towns together to be able to coordinate things a little bit better? And this was one, we had several meetings with other towns, it was an eye-opening experience to be able to do that. And out of that, we've come about with other projects that we can work together on. And I think that was an important mission, not to mention that I'm old and I probably will leave it, but it's something. I just think it was terrible.
What?
I would like to thank these members of the community here for their efforts and explaining. It's a tough, tough war we're in, especially with our healthcare. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, I live over in the town of Newfield. I notice anything, any call over there, whether it's fire or rescue, lots of times, Newfield and Soccapi show up at the same call. Do they hear the calls when they, when they go out?
We have a mutual aid. We have an agreement with them and we have an agreement with Limerick as well. If you're out in the seventeen-hundred block of, of Parsonsfield, you're probably actually living in Limerick. So, if something desperate happens over there, if somebody has a bad heart attack or cardiac arrest, we'll have both units.
I live pretty close to Maplewood, if you're the side of Newfield. So, that nearer than you want to, to get there.
Yep.
In the Providence Lake area, that whole area of Newfield is much closer than we are. They can make it a little bit sooner than we can. That's five minutes ride for us in good weather. So, we automatically have our dispatchers tag Newfield and have them head to the scene as well.
Back to the golden hour.
Yep.
If you're in.
Sir, I, I would, I would, I'll let you speak, of course, but I would ask that before you speak, you raise your hand. Otherwise, it causes all sorts of confusion and, but you are recognized, sir.
I'm just wondering, in the mutual aid system, if you're in contact with them, and I've seen it happen where both units show up, one essentially turns around and goes back.
Yep.
If you knew they were going to get there ahead of you, why do, I, I'm not sure why you dispatch?
Does that matter of the dispatch has certain run lists for certain types of events?
Not so much run list, but who is on each truck? The trucks, some trucks are at the paramedic level, they can do everything, and some trucks are at the basic level, which can get you to the hospital. A lot of times, we don't know which level is needed. We are in contact with them and, and sometimes we'll get to a, a, a scene like that that's remote and the person that we're working on is maybe a little bit heavier than two people in this room and the two ambulances puts a little bit more speed into the operation and gets them out of the road.
I got one quick question. Oh, yes, uh, I was on a budget committee quite a few years back, way back with the rescues, you know, squad, when they came in, people, but one thing that they were having trouble then was getting paid when, when they bill the customer, you, you get paid. And at that time, they indicated they, they really didn't aggressively go after payment. And I'm not sure that's the situation then, but, I mean, I, my opinion was then, they let people, once the word's out there, wow, if you don't pay them, don't worry, they'll forget about it. Just wondering how aggressive are they now to get paid from insurance companies and stuff like that that shouldn't be paid at this time?
These are tough times for all. In the years past, we were writing off seventy-five, eighty thousand a year. But as, today, we're probably under, under twenty. Now, only going after those people, we have chose not to do that for that, for that simple reason. Whether they can or not, we, we send out, we send out announcements that this is due. But we do that, I think it's three times. And we take that under consideration to circumstances. But, but no, we're going.
Well, then you reduce it a little.
But, yeah, but this is, but it's getting, it's got better over the years. I mean, writing off almost eighty thousand a year, and that hurts a lot, this is one.
Anything more on Article 18, Soccapi Rescue, eighty-one thousand dollars? Hear or not, all those in favor of Article 18 as read? Those opposed? Article passes. Uh, Article 19, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate. Article nineteen, the city town will vote to raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars to be placed in the Socapu Rescue Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay.
Move consecutive. Questions, comments? What?
What's in the reserve fund right now?
Twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I think you anticipated that, Cliff.
Man, I've known Cliff a long time.
Anything else on Article nineteen before we vote? All those in favor of Article nineteen as read. Those opposed, Article passes. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-three thousand dollars for professional valuation of real estate changes and maintenance of property records for the town for tax assessment purposes. Move consecutive. Questions, comments? Here or none, all those in favor of Article twenty as read. Those opposed, Article passes. Moving to Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of twenty-three thousand dollars to be placed in a reserve account as an initial deposit for a townwide revaluation. Move consecutive. Questions, comments? What?
Is the evaluation expected this year?
No. When do you estimate what happens?
Well, the sooner the better. Because we're losing a little bit of money on homestead and evaluations because we're not at the correct evaluation. But I'm just seeing how much, I think there was ten thousand that we started this program last year. Ten thousand, we're adding twenty-three, and the cost is probably a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, roughly, on seventy-one, in that area. So we will have thirty-three thousand saved up. So it becomes a question of balancing off, how much do we keep saving till we get closer to that hundred and eighty number? Or do we just say, we're losing too much money on the other end, let's just do it and fund a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand? So it, the next, I don't wanna say this is an, it's ongoing. We'll look more, every year will be coming up a decision of what to do.
Further questions, comments? I guess we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-one for the reserve account for the townwide revaluation? Please indicate. Those opposed, Article passes. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate following sums to cover health and sanitation expenses. The total amount is three hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred dollars. Those, we have a motion. Move consecutive. Questions, comments? Here, yes, sir.
I have a question about that Long Pond, checking the vote to pull you. Do they have an application of their own?
Who's here from Long Pond? Jesse?
This, this is actually something separate from that. I think there's a separate article in here for two thousand dollars somewhere for that. But Judy heads that up, correct? The one that, the check-in of the votes?
The courtesy vote is tracked.
Yes. Yeah, that's a separate article.
I'm reading, I have that question. I'm wondering if they do have any fundraisers to raise their own money to call in a back pay.
I didn't hear anything.
The gentleman asks if the Long Pond Association raises money on itself to cover these types of things.
Yes, our dues, I think it's a third of our dues goes towards the courtesy vote inspection. And then we have a contract with the town, and that's where you're going to get the twenty-two in the net article that's coming up.
That answers my question. They are putting some of their own money into it.
Definitely, yeah.
Instead of all back pay money.
What?
Maybe Judy could speak upon this. Solid waste has a certain portion that's recycling. And Judy, maybe you could speak as to what the condition of our town is in terms of what percent is actually being recycled?
It's not good.
Who knows about recycling?
It's not good. If you're looking there.
Has it gone down over the last two or three years?
It has.
Oh, really?
Yep. But the one, the one good thing is that the town has not been dinged because our recycling is contaminated. We've done a really good job with that. No plastic bags are in there. And the things that, if you remember for a while, they were not picking up if you had stuff in there. So we've done a great job there, but as far as the recycling, totally no, it's gone down.
So could you state just for everybody here, how much possible money we could possibly save per year? Is it appropriate if we did more recycling?
I think it's in the article in here that was written, that would say how much we would save. It's in the town report.
Okay. Deep in the town report. Further questions, comments on Article two, twenty-two? Jeff?
The recycling is down, and Judy mentioned that contaminants are down there. They're not putting anything that's not foreign yet. But what happens too is a lot of people say, you know what? I don't wanna do, I don't wanna sort it out, so I'm just gonna throw it all in my trash. And that's probably why the recycling is down, if the people just say, I don't have time to be doing this, I'm just gonna throw my trash. But what we need is something to tell people that they're not gonna pick up their rubbish because they have recycling in it. So if we could reverse it by telling people, all their cat litter in your trash should be recycled and not, we're not gonna pick up your cat litter. Until it's recycling.
Further questions, comments? Carolyn?
I've read some of the material that was given to us about recycling. If you have a doubt, don't put it in the recycle. And I often do. I'm like, what about dental floss things, you know? I don't know. So I put it in the regular trash, but I would like, I'm very careful and I really would like to do the right thing. But if I'm in doubt, I don't wanna put it in there till the recyclers spoil it.
Judy, is there a listing of what you should and shouldn't?
Yeah, I'll talk, during the break, I'll talk to her.
Okay. Danielle says, she's got paperwork that tells you what you can't put in.
That's what I was going to get, so Danielle.
Judy mentioned a break. I'm looking at maybe ten-thirty. These chains are hard. We might take a five-minute break just to stretch our legs and get the blood flowing and stuff like that. Anyway, let's get back to Article twenty-two. Any further questions, comments?
I just wanna make a comment that I, the Long Pond Association or the Supplemental Cardiff Commission did not put in the two hundred dollars. So thank you, whoever put that in there for the testing. We did not request that.
Interesting. FYI, Socapu Cardiff asked two hundred dollars for town involvement, same thing. And it included E. coli testing, which is a whole heck of a lot more important than water turbidity, whatever that means.
So that's probably what's happening, is that we've been doing it gratis all along. And we now have the testing equipment in-house, and that equipment was expensive. So thank you for answering.
Anything else on Article twenty-two? Here or no further comment. All those in favor of Article twenty-two as presented? Those opposed, Article twenty-two passes. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen on behalf of the town to enter into a three-year contract with two-year extension clause through the mid-process for plowing, sanding and salting roads for each of the two sections of the town starting in fiscal year July twenty-twenty-three. Hear motion? Move consecutive. Questions, comments on plowing, sanding and salting? Here or none, all those in favor?
Gary, hit him.
Who? Yes.
When you guys, we ran into problems years ago. And one thing happened then. I don't know how we came out financially with that deal when the contractor didn't finish the year. But do you guys require bonds now from these contractors so that we don't get caught if a guy does not perform, that we're giving the same situation we did years ago?
Question was, do you require bonds?
No. Don't you think that can be a liability?
Well.
I mean, what, how, example is it?
Happened to us.
And financially, what did that cost?
The simple answer is yes. I start saying that word around, these guys just kinda look at me and say, we don't gotta plow your town.
The other towns? I mean, we used to require bonds years ago. And I can't believe other towns are just...
I guess I, I do not know if other towns.
I mean, they'll put the, there's bond, there'll be a bond cost. If the contractor can't get a bond, he almost tells you right then, and I'll recoup the contract.
I saw Dan's hand first. I'll be right over here, going.
I was working within the town office when we started making that change. We're getting more and more contractors that wouldn't even bid if we required a bond. What we did then was we changed the contract to say, if you don't plow, we can pull the money back and hire someone else to do it. And that was what covered the town largely. Because if we required a bond, all those that would bid on it, the price was so high that we couldn't touch it.
Yes.
Isn't there a way that the county of Parsons Field lawyers, and then whatever?
Yeah, we had, yes.
Isn't there a way that our town can actually protect us? So if the bidder for the job isn't interested in getting a bond, why can't Parsons Field appropriate a fund of, you know, maybe a hundred and fifty dollars and he had towards bonds to cover our people? Or is that a conflict of interest? Because it, it's what, a hundred and fifty dollars for, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollar coverage or whatever? So there must be a way that you build that into our budget to cover us without shorting us with people that don't wanna provide.
Selectman, do you have any?
I don't have anything to say to that. I don't know.
As I remember it, the deal was that some of these guys that we have calling votes for, the ones that we can get at a reasonable price, don't have the paperwork rating and stuff like that, that you can get the bonds people to take at a reasonable price. What we found out was it was cheaper for us to self-insure, basically.
Jeff, well, I'm wrong. I, I'm not, maybe you don't need to, but when you draw up a contract, make sure our lawyer or something reviews that and that we're covered. That's, that's the bottom line, is I don't, I, I don't know how we came out a few years ago, but that cost us some money, right?
Not ahead. Not ahead.
Well, is this still in the court system?
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, we can cover ourselves better. Maybe if the bond puts it up or you can't afford them, I just can't believe Conish. I mean, that's some good contractors out there, right?
And if you take a gander at the prices that they're paying, they just went up the contract. And take a gander at the prices that they're paying over there, we're pretty darn lucky.
Bottom line is, I think all these contractors have got together, the winners are a lot less than what they used to be. But they all get the prices up. And it's money-making thing for them with what, I mean, they could get hit with.
Okay, I got number hands, one, two, three. Yes, sir.
All right, I know. I remember when they used to, my father used to bid almost every time it came up, so the forties and fifties. But he drove for the contractor anyway, during that contract. But every time it came up, he would bid. But if they were low bidder, they had to prove that they could get a bond or they didn't get the contract. And the story behind it is, that was open bidding back then. It was like an auction. It's down here, bid, bid on it, and somebody finally was a low bidder.
In Baltimore, we gave our horse-drawn roll, snow roller to the Fiber Fair a few years ago. I think it was a mistake here.
The only thing else I was gonna add was, the word bond sounds scary to a lot of people that are not familiar with it. But it is such an easy process. So if it was included in the packet for the contract, for the contractor bidding it, and they're, they see it and they see what it details and the actual cost, people are not gonna turn a job away because they have to be bonded. We have everything we need for it. It should be in every packet that we give to anybody bidding on a job.
What?
Yes, this is more of a technical question. Will Parsons Field be broken up into two or three segments and who will be responsible?
Two.
And different crews will be two sect, two sectors? And there's at least what, four people to pick from to plow or? Yeah, go ahead.
It seems so it works pretty good, fluid-wise and size-wise, the way we've gotten it split up now. So I'm a hundred percent that it will stay split down the middle, two sections. As far as getting people to bid, that's a hope and pray type thing, you know what I'm saying? We were very lucky and I think we had seven, seven bids on, combined on the two sections last, last time. But that, you don't get that every time. I mean.
So are you dealing with some of the long-term residents, like people who live in town or?
Uh, some. Some, they've all been local people, you know, kind of district or whatever. We have, you know, nobody wants to drive from Porville to come plow our roads.
Danielle, do you have some information?
Do you guys foresee if the levels are gonna change at all? Are you gonna look at closing Easty Road or are you going to plow?
That was one thing we were in the process of talking about, was Keyser Mountain Road and Easty Road. Shutting them down from residence to residence turned up during the wintertime.
I guess one quick question. One more. I mean, have you guys ever considered it being a five-year contract rather than three was possible too? I mean, for someone, you real, I don't know if that's an incentive or not. For someone to size up and get the equipment, but if you're getting someone that doesn't have the equipment anyways, probably not a good contractor. But I mean, I just see, you know, contractors in Conish that are selling equipment. I don't know if they're going out of it, that a good contractor's, you know.
Contractor in Conish buys and sells stuff year-round. That's nothing.
Oh, is that what that issue is?
He's turning over stuff month, weekly.
A longer contract, maybe, I don't know how people think about that, a five-year was possible too, or something like that. It's a short contract.
We're out of limits on how long a contract we can make. I don't know if five is the outside edge. We use three, but I think that might be the max.
I got you. I saw Jeff's hand first.
I'll bring you the quick, there was mention of some road closing. I don't want anybody to be afraid of that. What used to be seasonal roads is now open year-round. The problem is, we plow it all the time. And then when it comes to the mud season, we don't plow, which is fine because it's mud season. But we've already paid that plowing contract to plow that road. That doesn't get plowed because it's mud season. That's why we should close those roads, the two roads that I mentioned, only because we're paying for something to be plowed and it doesn't get plowed in the spring for a good reason because of mud season. If we keep people off those roads during the wintertime, because some could just go through the woods anyways. We'll save money, which we need, Parsons Field needs to do. And we won't have to repair that much because people won't be driving on those roads and mudding them up and having the rain come in the springtime. So we shouldn't be afraid to close them.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to answer his question. I remember, I'm telling my age now, but back in the forties, fifties, sixties, I think into the seventies, before they went to the three-year contract. But the three-year contract now is three years with a possible two-year extension, which they usually get. If a town and the contractor both satisfy, they vote another few years. It would end up in five. And the mountain road, I don't agree with closing that. I agree with closing it. It's a hazy road. I don't give you that one. But mountain road is a direct route for the plows to get from the chalk, get over the west passing.
I live on Hasty Road, and I'll tell you, if you're closing it, not plowing it because of mud, when mud season comes, unless you block the road off so they can't get through it, they're gonna run it anyways. And so they're gonna stay. And so they're going to stay the road up. And the only issue I got with Hasty Road, because I'm there and I see how it get plowed, they didn't even plow it, this last contractor, last year, they don't even plow through till the storm's over, and then they go one-way on it. So I'm all for closing it, you know, we can run snowmobiles on it in the wintertime, but I mean, they're not even plowing it per the contract now, so.
It's a bear. It's a bear if you have to get the rescue down there.
Well, the rescue you got to know about.
Anyway, Article twenty-three, further questions, comments?
I just, I just want to clarify, it wasn't Mountain Road, it was Keizer Mountain Road.
Oh, Keizer Mountain? I was thinking of Mountain.
And that's a whole other discussion, and I'm sure you'll be there and we'll have it when we get to it.
Talking about that, I heard Mountain.
At some point, we'll have a town meeting after that.
We're ready, we're ready to vote on Article twenty-three. Here are no further discussions. All those in favor of Article twenty-three as presented. Those opposed. Article twenty-three passes. Now, I said that about ten-thirty, we take a break. What I'd like to do, since we're talking, having so much fun talking about roads and bridges, let's keep on working our way down through until we get to, until we cover Article twenty-six, and we can, we can take a quick five-minute break. But we're having, we're having a good time in roads. Article twenty-four, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following sums to cover winter road maintenance and sand and salt expenses. Total winter road maintenance, sand and salt is four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Do we hear a motion? Move in second. Questions, comments? Jeff?
Just one thing, you know, when the city goes on the roads and, and it's like I know this, the state comes through and takes all that road sand and pushes it into the haul weight, and then they have to come back later on and dig it back out. In the village, they actually take it out. And we really need to get the state to clear up the sand that goes on the state road, because they're just pushing it right into, into haul weight of the digits, and in the village, they actually take it out.
Further questions, comments regarding Article twenty-four? Here are none. All those in favor of Article twenty-four as presented. Those opposed. Article twenty-four passes. Article twenty-five, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following amounts to cover highway and bridge expenses. Total highway and bridge is four hundred and ten thousand dollars. Do we have a motion? Move in second. Questions, comments? Jeff, how did I?
Just one really quick thing on general maintenance and bridges. Some sort of a bridge, you just swept in the springtime, because they leave all that sand and salt on the bridge that goes into the river. So it'd be wise to clean it up in the springtime, and plus, the salt, the utilities, the cement, so long you keep that sand and salt on that bridge, I mean, the utilities of the bridge that you just paid for.
Makes sense. Further questions, comments on highways and bridges?
Do we have a list of what bridges or what general maintenance issues are coming up? Because I see that paving has its own line of general maintenance, it's kind of, I believe, I mean, two hundred and twenty thousand. Is that just general maintenance and private roads and grading and resand and?
Ditching.
Ditching.
Cullards, roughly.
Okay.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. No further discussion? All those in favor of Article twenty-five as presented? Those opposed. Article passes. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to appropriate up to eighty-four thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars for maintenance of roads from current fiscal year LRAP monies, and again, it's eighty-four thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars. Do we have a motion? Second. Discussion. Jeff?
Just one quick thing, so it mentions paving. I heard this, this mention of paving the town parking lot, which I don't think we should do, but because the word says paving, I just mentioned that, which is for FYI.
Jesse, the paving?
Yeah, that was mentioned, and we are still looking into that, paving the town parking lot, but that was going to be on a vote for the ARPA funds, out of the ARPA funds, nor?
Can't do that LRAP money, because that's for roads, roads, right?
I, you're probably right, I'm not certain on that, but that, the paving and the parking lot was going to be brought to you folks with a final price to vote whether you want to use it out of the ARPA funds.
Okay, further discussion, questions? Here are none. All those in favor of Article twenty-six, the LRAP article? Those opposed. The article passes. If there's no objection, let's take a brief break, and we will, we will be in recess until quarter of the hour, and everybody. Meeting will be back in order. Meeting will be back in order. Before we begin, I would like to mention that the fellow sitting in the back in the bright blue shirt is Jim Libby. He's running for state senate in this district, and we are, depending on how, how, he, he has places to go, I should have been there, but depending on how long we take, he may be still available when we get through with Article twenty-five, which I believe is the insurance article. Anyway, it's Jim Libby in the back of the state senate. Article twenty-seven, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars plus any state individual reimbursements to cover a general assistance program. Do we have a motion? Move in second. Questions, comments, general assistance? Here are none. All those in favor of Article twenty-seven as read? Those opposed. Article passes. Article twenty-eight, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following sums to cover cultural and recreation expenses. Have a total of ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Move in second. Questions, comments? Here are none. All those in favor of Article twenty-eight as read? Those opposed. Article passes. Article twenty-nine, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, raise and appropriate the following sums to cover social service expenses. The total is nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Move in second. Questions, comments? Judy?
This is the point of innovation. It's Smooth Feather, not feathers. As I just want, in case people don't know who that is, that's Silas Haggerty, and he takes kids in the summertime and has a film school for them, and he has renovated the old theater in Keizer, in case you don't know, and really helps the kids that are struggling in the summer with nothing to do, so please vote for that.
Further questions, comments on Article twenty-nine? Cliff?
It would be nice to be able to build up some kind of an access fund in this area here where it comes to social services and things that help people in our town. So next year, I would like to propose that we appropriate some additional funds for miscellaneous expenses that might come up with any, anything regarding helping public services for people in our town. Just so if like, somebody comes to the town, town and says, you know, we've got this new program, the school wants to send kids over, we have some extra money to do. That, we, we appropriate additional funds for other things, just in case. Maybe we can appropriate an additional two thousand dollars just to have, and keep it in that account.
Jeff?
Well, if you're on the question committee, anybody who wants any money, they can submit something to the budget committee in writing, and they will look at it and vote on it.
Sounds good. Further questions, comments on Article twenty-nine? Here are none. All those in favor of Article twenty-nine as read? Those opposed. Twenty-nine passes. Article thirty, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following sums to cover miscellaneous expenses. And the amount of seventy-four hundred dollars. Move in second. Questions, comments? Here are none. All those in favor of Article thirty as read? Those opposed. Article passes. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand two hundred dollars for the town share of funding the courtesy boat inspection station at the Long Pond Moab Round. Move in second. Questions, comments?
Jesse, I just have one question that's slightly pertaining to this. Did the treatment go through at Long Pond?
Yes, yeah, I was going to ask.
Okay.
Yes, thanks to the Long Pond Association members, also members of the community and business of the community, we were able to raise two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an alum treatment for Long Pond, and that was done in the beginning of June. The water is as clear as I remember as a kid in nineteen forty. It is amazing. All the phosphorus that was accumulated on the bottom, that when the water warms up, it rolls over and hits the sunlight, and it becomes an algae bloom, now all that phosphorus is now encapsulated on the bottom, and it's supposed to last twenty years, which is wonderful. But, yeah.
What treatment is that?
Alum, A-L-U-M.
Is that natural?
What do you mean, natural?
Like, is it some kind of a chemical that?
It is a chemical, yes.
Does it affect the fish population?
Yeah, we found three dead fish, that was it.
Was it aluminum sulfate, I think it is?
Aluminum sulfate.
Yeah, it's an alkaline.
Right.
All, all.
So, but we're still continuing our efforts to prevent erosion. I mentioned before about people cutting trees and removing vegetation, because that way soil goes into the pond, and guess what soil carries? Phosphorus.
I assume you have to get a DDP permit to?
Oh, my God, oh, I went through a, I'm sorry.
Like that much paper?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so that's that question. The other thing I just wanted to let you know, with our CBI inspections this year, this summer, we had difficulty finding people at least sixteen years of age and older at fifteen dollars an hour to come and see by the beautiful Long Pond and inspect the boats. We could not find anyone. So we raised our page to twenty dollars an hour, and we found a young man who's in college who was our inspector for the rest of the summer. But since we only had one, it was difficult when he had some college responsibilities and we had no inspector. So the total inspections that were done, was done this summer was only a hundred and fifty-eight. Normally, they're in the three hundreds. And the other amazing thing is there were more kayaks put in than boats. We only had forty-five boats, seventy-one kayaks, thirty-two paddleboards, five canoes, and five jet skis. Something's going on with why people aren't voting.
I see kayaks on the top of cars, all the time. Jesse, were you going to say something?
Probably your boat launch.
You know, well, you know what? That boat launch.
Okay, any further, further questions?
Thank you, Adam, thank you for the, this contribution.
Further questions, comments on Article thirty-one, the Long Pond Moab Round? Hmm? Oh, it's already. All those in favor of Article thirty-one as presented? Those opposed. Article passes. Article thirty-two, see if the town will vote to appropriate the refunded fees from snowmobile registrations to be split equally between the Soccapi Valley Snow Drifters, Inc. snowmobile club and the Route eleven streakers snowmobile club. Said some to be the amount refunded by the state for the prior fiscal year, which amounts to five hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents. The money is to be used for purposes such as trail maintenance, construction, or purchase of equipment and materials for the maintenance and construction of trails, which are to be opened to the public, free of charge during the wet season. Do we have a motion? Move.
So move.
Move in second. Questions, comments? Here are none. All those in favor of Article thirty-two as read? Those opposed. Article passes. The streakers will be happy. Article thirty-three, see if the town will vote to appropriate any franchise fees received in the prior fiscal year from Spectrum Char to be given to TV Two for the purchase and maintenance of equipment and for operating costs. This amounts to six thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Have a motion? Move in second. Are you still called TV Two, or is there a new name?
No, it's still TV Two.
Still TV Two, okay, very good. Questions, comments? All those in favor of Article thirty-three for TV Two as read? Those opposed. Article passes. Excellent service, they come most all over our town, as I said.
I have one question.
Yeah?
In the future, Ed is lined up to get cameras in these rooms, will you be able to use that footage directly somehow, or are you still?
If we can find a way to link it, I think we might be able to put it on YouTube and stuff, which might be on the Soccapi channel.
Yeah, well, I thought maybe then you wouldn't have to be present if you were.
Yeah, and then like I said, if anything, we can still put it on the Soccapi channel that way, you know, another slot where people have been used to getting it.
I knew you were low on help.
Absolutely, yeah. Only about four or five kids this year.
Well, I, I, I see a live camera person, I see her moving the camera around to, to grab different people, and that's something that dummy cameras up on the ceiling can't do, so.
Very true.
I, I put myself through most of the University of Maine at Arno by working up at TV Two, but it was Channel Two in Vanguard, a random transmitter I played, so. Hang with it someday, sixty years down the road, you too can be a moderator. Or you can do a lot better. Anyway, the article pass. Article thirty-four, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six thousand dollars, parentheses, two thousand each, and to authorize the selectmen on behalf of the town to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the town of Newfields Fire Department, town of Limerick's Fire Department, and the town of Effingham's Fire Department for fire protection and Effingham's Rescue for emergency first response medical care for the western area of Parsonsfield for the ensuing year. Do we have a motion? Move in second. Questions, comments? Here are none. All those in favor of Article thirty-four as read? Those opposed. Article passes. Article thirty-five, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to be placed in the municipal building capital repair fund. Move in second. Questions, comments? Here are none. All those in favor of Article thirty-five as read? Those opposed. Article passes. Thirty, Article thirty-six, see if the town will vote to appropriate from, to appropriate twenty thousand dollars from the Bartlett Doe Fund credited to the relief account by vote of the town on March ninth, nineteen fifty-three, for the support of the common schools and said some to be applied as partial payment of the school assessment for the ensuing year. Move in second. Great discussion. Here are none. All those in favor of Article thirty-six as read? Article passes. Did I ask for, those opposed? I didn't, see, I'm getting punched. Those opposed. Going to do that. The article passes. Like I say, you turn the building around, it takes a long time, you train an old dog. Article thirty-seven, see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen on behalf of the town to accept or to refuse donations and bequests that may be offered to the town, and if accepted, to spend the same in accordance with the wishes of the donor. Such expenditures shall be in addition to any other amounts raised or appropriated elsewhere for a similar purpose. Move in second. Discussion. Here are none. All those in favor of Article thirty-seven as read? Those opposed. Article passes. Article thirty-eight, see if the town will vote to establish sixty days after commitment as the date when the twenty-twenty-two real estate and personal property taxes will be due and payable, and to establish a rate of four percent interest to be charged on all unpaid taxes as of that date. The maximum allowable rate set by the state of Maine is four percent. Move in second. Discussion. Here are none. All those in favor of Article thirty-eight as read? Those opposed. Article passes. See if the town will vote to establish... See if the town will vote to establish a rate of 2% discount to be allowed on all real estate and personal property taxes paid in full within 30 days of commitment. Discussion. Here are none, all those in favor of Article 39 is read. Those opposed. I keep bringing this up over Baldwin, they just laugh at me. I think it's a, a good idea. Article 40, see if the town will vote to use the tax lien mortgage method for the collection of unpaid discounted taxes after the expiration of eight months from the commitment date, and to establish 4% as the rate of interest to be charged on all liens until paid in full. Maximum allowable rate set by the state is 4% per annum. The municipal offices shall use the special sale process required by 36 MRS, section 743C for qualifying homestead property if they choose to sell any tax lien foreclosed property to anyone other than the formal, than the former owners. Move and seconded, discussion, Judy.
Can you give us an example, Mr. Chair?
No.
David, or, yeah?
You want an example of what?
What? Give us an example of what this means.
Okay, if somebody doesn't pay their taxes within eight months of commitment, we place a lien on the property, that's basically a process where a filing goes to the registry of deeds, says they're unpaid taxes. It adds some costs to the, uh, to the account, and then 18 months after that, if that year's taxes are not paid, the town forecloses on the property. It's automatic, 18 months after the lien is placed. And there are notifications that have to go out, and we get in touch with the owners. On occasion, we can't find the owners, that's happened once or twice in my tenure, and we foreclose on it.
So why, in the book here, are there some people that owe taxes for the past two or three years?
Well, for two years.
Two years?
Yes, because the lien is eight months after commitment, and then they have 18 months to pay that. During that period, though, there will be two more years of taxes, because glove taxes committed in this September, or in this month, that will mean that people that haven't paid the twenties will have three years of taxes.
So, so they pay the oldest one, then?
Yeah, all they have to pay is the oldest one, if we don't foreclose on it. If we foreclose on it and they want to buy it back, the policy has been they have to pay all of the taxes, plus legal fees.
That makes sense, thank you.
Cliff.
So this article would apply directly to, uh, buildings like the Stanley Building, correct? And are there, were there any other expenses that were, are wrapped, are built up by the, the present owner that wouldn't be affected by this?
Cliff, I, I would point out that in the next, the, next to last line, uh, there are some, uh, mentions of homestead property, and I don't know if the Stanley Building is, is under that designation.
I guess my question is, are there any other expenses that are, built up on the Stanley Building that are not, uh, tax-oriented? Unpaid tax-oriented, are there any other expenses that are still? Yes, sir?
Yeah, absolutely, almost monthly. We have to have a lawyer involved for this whole thing, and every time he picks up the phone call or writes, draws something down, we gotta pay him. So, that's, that's the way it goes.
So.
Did you, did you have anything else to say?
Can we get our lawyer's fee reimbursed? Is there a way, way on that?
That would be something we would go after, just like we did with the Mr. Smith and the plowing contract that he bailed out on. We don't know how much money we're gonna get back, but we are pursuing it.
This is a council down here. Jesse?
In these cases, there's usually a long list of people going after, and we're not on top of the list, so it's, it's, I don't know. I, 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 we voted, the town voted to spend, I think, $5,000 pursuing, uh, the plow contract that failed, and it was?
Up to five, yeah.
Up to five, and hindsight, you're throwing money away, basically, get it off your plate and not work, just write it, whatever you're gonna do, it's not worth it, it really isn't. It wraps you up for, you know, in thought and paperwork for years, so.
Cliff? So is there one large expense that isn't covered by this tax lien that the town is liable for every month on the Stanley Building, or every few weeks?
Uh, we, uh, we were, up until we got the temporary injunction, we were pumping the tank. But when we got the temporary injunction, uh, we were able to plug the tank, so any water, in the water was shut off in this building, I believe, correct? So unless he's lugging water in and dumping it down the drain, and then if it is, it's backing up into his place, it's not going into the tanks anymore, so. We're looking to get it permanent, I know we're getting away from that, but once that's permanent, we can move on with our lives, but that's waiting for the courts and paying the lawyer, and that's the way it goes.
Anything else on Article 40? David?
Yeah, um, reading this article, I'm questioning the wording, the tax lien mortgage method for the collection of unpaid discounted taxes. Discounted appears to be an extraneous and incorrect word. I would offer an amendment that we strike discounted from there. Basically, we are looking for the collection of unpaid taxes.
Okay, I would ask, selectman, this is your article, do you?
I agree, I didn't know why that was in there.
Okay, David, uh, David, uh, moved an amendment to strike the word discounted, do I hear a second? Okay, we're voting on the amendment, not on the article. Uh, the, the motion is to amend Article 40 to strike the word discounted, in which appears in front of the word taxes. And, uh, move and seconded?
Yeah.
Uh, discussion. Here are none, all those in favor of amending to get rid of discounted? Those opposed. Okay, the amendment carries, so we will strike the word discounted between unpaid taxes. Further discussion on Article 40 as amended. Here are none, all those in favor of Article 40 as amended. Those opposed. Article 40 as amended, passes. Article 41, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes to the amount collected not to exceed the previous year's taxes. Interest on any prepayment will be 0%. Move and seconded, discussion. Here are none, all those in favor of Article 41 is read. Uh, those opposed, Article 41 passes. Article 42, to see if the town will vote to establish 4% as the rate of interest it will pay on taxes that have been overpaid in excess of the full amount, full amount assessed in accordance with MRSA 36, section 506A. Move and seconded, discussion. Cliff?
Okay, so let's say my taxes are $2,600 and I have to pay $4,600. How does that, this 4% affect?
Jesse? Uh, if we sent you a tax bill for $2,600 and you paid $4,600, I don't think we're gonna give you 4% on your money, that's your bad. I believe this is if we make a mistake.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Just wanted to check.
Further questions and comments on Article 42? Here are none, all those in favor of Article 42 is read. Those opposed, article passes. Article 43, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to use monies from the overlay account for real estate and personal property tax discounts and tax abatements, including any interest accrued thereon. Move and seconded, discussion. Here are none, all those in favor of Article 43 is read. Them as opposed, none, the article passes. Now, do we need a written vote on this one, Dan? Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, Article 44, to see if the town will vote to exceed the 2022 municipal property tax levy per MRSA title 38, well, there's a whole lot in 38. Anyway, an affirmative vote will allow this municipality to surpass the 2021 limit, but requires that the 2022 limit will be used as the base for next year's limit calculation. Do we have a motion? Move and seconded. Uh, this is, this is kind of a housekeeping type amendment. It, by state law, it requires a written vote. We need at least three people to vote for this. And anybody as wants to, can, here's the secret ballot. If we can get three, a minimum of three people to come forward.
We just need a yes or a no on the ballot?
This is, this is, this is a big state for that.
I have a question, Ross.
Yes, sir?
Could this be put into what we voted on last night, into that form? I mean, this, we made it from here to?
It's a state, my understanding, this was nineteen, the 1990s, it's a state requirement. I'm not an option for the county to understand why in carnation they have to do it, but you actually have to do it, and three people is a quorum on this vote. Uh, I don't, I don't know as you can put it on a ballot, a ballot. I don't know. It, it, I believe it has to be brought up as an article, it's cheap and easy. Are we finished with voting on, on Article 44?
We're done here.
Okay, I can put a voting on Article 44. Now, if we could have the tally of the results.
Yeah, two yeses and one no.
Okay, the, uh, the, uh, article passes by a vote of two to one. So Article, Article 44 is approved. Next thing is adjournment, um, before we, before we, uh, break camp and pull down the tent. Again, Jim Libby's sitting in the back, if you'd like to talk to him, he may or may not be headed up to Augusta uh, in the coming months, and, uh, probably need to let him know what you think on various things. Article 45 is a motion to adjourn, do I hear a motion? Been moved and seconded. Strangely enough, an article, an article to adjourn is not debatable. So I can't help you, Jeff. I know, I, I depend on you, Jeff. All those in favor? Yeah, before we adjourn, I just wanna thank Harvey for his three years of?
Harvey was the guy who started the site walks, the planning board meeting, the appeals board meeting, sitting back there taking notes, he's generally sitting next to Jeff. But just wanna thank him again, we appreciate his, his service.
Harvey's term ends when the, when the gavel drops and, uh, David went, or, Daniel, when will folks be sworn in? Uh, new, new officers will be sworn in on Monday. Uh, again, thanks very much for coming. Not enough people come to town meeting, it's not just a quaint tradition, it's how we get things done. And again, thank you for inviting me to join you. Uh, oh, we actually have?
The check is in the mail.
We actually, we actually have to vote, all those in favor of adjournment?
Yay!
Them as opposed?
Yeah, it is opposed.
Thank you very much.